Let's call the meeting of the City Council of Camarillo to order. And we will have a roll call.
Councilmember Craven?
Here.
Councilmember Kildee?
Here.
Councilmember McDonald?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Mayor Little?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Could everyone please stand? Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
There are no amendments.
Okay. We have public comments. We do have a card for public comment. And we'll ask Grace Winner to come forward. And you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Grace Winner.
Please speak into that microphone, Grace, because we can't hear you.
Good evening. This is... My name is Grace Winner. And I am a resident at the Bradford Apartments here in Camarillo. And I return this evening as the issues are still standing with the apartment, the complex, and the lack of available units for me to relocate to. There was a request of Mr. Vaca to contact me. And as of today, I have had no contact.
Okay. Mr. Vaca, do you have anything you want to...
Has anything changed since last time?
Yes, since the last council meeting, Mr. Mo has met with Ms. Winner and also provided a letter which outlined all the potential service providers that could assist her in her needs.
Okay, good.
All right. Anything else you'd like to add, Mrs. Winner?
Yes, the meeting that I had with Mr. Mo occurred on the 18th. The same day of the meeting, prior to the meeting. The resources that he provided for me were resources that I already had, that he knew that I already had. I had requested an inspection on the 18th. I had requested an inspection on the 10th. I came in last week to ask for a copy of those inspections. And I was told there was no inspection report made. I'm... There's... I'm receiving a lack of follow-through. And I would like to have that expedited. I'm still not residing in my apartment and still on the streets. And I'm asking for some assistance in getting relocated and holding the owner of the housing... or the Bradford Apartments accountable for the condition of the complex.
Can I ask one question before we go any further? Dave? Not Dave. Could we find out, you know, has anything changed since the last time they gave her dates they were going to start working on those apartments? As I recall?
There's a public meeting this Saturday at the Bradford Apartments by the Area Housing Authority to discuss the upcoming projects. And Mr. Mo plans to attend that as well on behalf of city staff.
So this Saturday, there should be something, some word coming out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up? Is that something that Mrs. Winner should go to? Is that for the public?
Yes, that would be a good idea for her to attend.
And do you happen to know the time and place of it?
It's at the Bradford Apartments at 9:00 a.m. this Saturday.
And where at in the Bradford Apartments? There's three locations.
I don't know. But we'll find that information out and contact you and give you the specific location.
Okay.
I have a question too, Your Honor.
Yes.
What about, Joe, the report that was done? Is that done by a third party or is that done by...
We've investigated issues that have been raised. And building and safety staff, including our building official and building inspectors and Mr. Mo have completed several inspections at the Bradford Apartments.
Okay. Okay.
I think the bottom line is they're moving forward with... We dealt with the financing of the repairs just recently. And they're moving forward as fast as they can. And I don't know that we... There's much else we can do other than provide the list of other resources. Because we're not really in the housing business. And we don't have any of the other services, mental health services or anything like that. They're county services.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, if I could add, much of the... Many of the comments that Mr. Vaca has made in terms of what the city has done in our inspections and reports and working with her, these are things that we typically don't do. So we are trying to do everything that we can do above and beyond, frankly, some of the areas that we have jurisdiction over. It's the Area Housing Authority that really has jurisdiction over this. One thing I would recommend, but we cannot control is... We're headed into winter. And if you are outside and homeless, if there is an available unit to move to, it may not be in Camarillo, but it would probably be better than living outside. And that is your decision. But that's something that we cannot require of you. But that is certainly your decision. And I would just suggest that you consider other places to live, even if it's temporary. I don't... And I'm speaking, frankly, out of turn as well. Because I don't know if there can be temporary living...
The vouchers and the certificates transfer from one municipality to another.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is I don't know if there's a lease involved. But where if she commits, it would have to be for a minimum amount of time. But I guess the point is, is these are things that I would encourage you to work with the Area Housing Authority. And you have their contact information. If you don't have that now, we can certainly get it to you again. But that's really where your trail to success is, in my opinion, working with the Area Housing Authority.
Okay.
And I would again echo the fact that I think you should attend that meeting on Friday or Saturday morning to...
I have full intentions. This is the first I've been notified of it.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
You know, even if you left your windows open, because you're going to be on the outside anyway, to keep the inside of that room that you're trying to, you know, you'd like to have fixed, it's better than being outside.
I've been... You do not understand. It is making me ill to stay in that apartment. I go in there and my arms start to ache and my hands go numb. Along with other symptoms. And this is after 15 minutes of only 15 minutes of being in the apartment.
Well, I'd suggest you go to talk to them on Saturday and see what they can do about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other cards. So we'll close the public comments. And then move on to the reorganization of the City Council. Nominations will be received for the position of mayor.
I think Jeffrey can...
Jeffrey has to take that.
Jeffrey, would you take this over now?
Sir, before we begin, I'd like to review the process. I'll start with the position of mayor and open the nominations. If there are multiple nominations, we'll vote on the nominations in the order that they're received. If there's only one nomination, a motion to close nomination would elect the person who's nominated at that time. So we'll begin. For... Are there any nominations for the office of mayor?
I'll nominate Mike Morgan.
There... We need a second?
No. Are there any other nominations or motion to close nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Is that to close nominations or is that for Mike Morgan?
It's both. When you close nominations, it will... It will select the new mayor.
Motion carries five to nothing. We'll have nominations for the position of vice mayor.
Same thing. Are there any nominations for the position of vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate Jan McDonald.
Are there any other nominations or motion to close?
I move to close.
A second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
That motion carries five, nothing. Okay. Well, congratulations to the incoming mayor and vice mayor. Next item is recognition of and remarks by the outgoing mayor.
Do we have that... Yeah, I should present that to him, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come get it.
Bill, let's walk over here. I guess we take it kind of out of order because it says I talk next. But I think I should talk about the mayor right now. Bill, you've been, for the first time around, jumping the box here. You had some experience as a city manager, but you did a great job as city mayor.
I'll have some comments about that.
But we do appreciate what you've done. And on behalf of the City Council and the City of Camarillo, I'd like to present this plaque to you first.
Well, thank you very much.
And additionally, we do have... We do have a proclamation from... From Jackie Irwin's office that would show their appreciation for your being mayor and so on and so forth. And you know the proclamation type stuff? We give you all that stuff.
Can I get some...
Yeah, we finally got something good from the state. I hope it lasts.
Bring him up.
Okay.
Bring him up and let him present it.
He has another presentation.
Oh, that's another presentation.
Again, Bill, thank you for your efforts. I know it took a lot of convincing to get you to run for City Council. You know what you're getting into. So we appreciate your efforts. But here's this for you too.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, you want to say something?
Oh.
I've got some remarks.
And we have another presentation to be made.
Know them when you're on the mayor's seat. Know them all when you're on the...
Good evening, Mayor Little. Good evening, council members. Congresswoman Brownlee would like to extend her sincere gratitude for everything you've done for this great city and this great community this past year. And she just wants to thank you for your steadfast leadership and your commitment to Camarillo and building upon a great sense of community that emulates just such distinction and such great citizens here. So thank you for your steadfast leadership. We greatly appreciate it. And the Congresswoman greatly appreciates it. It is my honor to present you with a certificate of special congressional recognition for all the work that you have done as mayor this past year. Thank you, Mayor Little.
Well, thank you.
Of course.
Please give my thanks to Congresswoman Brownlee. And we look forward to having an ongoing relationship with her. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're special tonight. We're going in reverse order on the agenda.
Yeah.
On behalf of the city staff and of course myself, we have for you the five-year-running traditional mayor's commemorative scrapbook. And I think when you look in there, you're going to wonder how you survived the year. You did an incredible, incredible job of representing the city, making lots of speeches and presentations. And we ran out of printer paper to print out all the different pictures. You were really everywhere. You were the Energizer rabbit this year, so the bunny, rather. So congratulations. You're the number-one cheerleader. Yeah. And that'll give you something to do as you unwind from your mayor's year. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And I appreciate whoever...
I'm sorry, Jeffrey put that together. She loves doing this.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And thanks, everyone, for doing this. I'll look this over. It's really... Looks very, very interesting. I didn't realize I was going to get all this. Perhaps should have. Well, it says the recognition and remarks by the outgoing mayor. So I do have a few remarks. And just like to make a few comments. First, let me say that I am truly grateful to have been mayor of the City of Camarillo for the past 12 months. As a former city manager, I watched dozens of council members in this city, as well as others, serve in that position. And I thought I knew what the job entailed. Was I wrong? I never realized the amount of time and effort it takes to do all the things the mayor is asked to do and to do them well. It's a very busy job. I enjoyed it greatly. And I feel fortunate to have had the experience. I will remember it well in the years ahead. 2015 was a year of new beginnings for the city, starting with the opening of Rancho Compana High School. After many years of waiting for a new school, we now have one that is designed for teaching in the 21st century. It will serve our community well in the coming years. Another beginning was the groundbreaking for the new patient wing at Plessa Valley Hospital. It too is much-needed and will provide excellent medical care to our citizens for many years into the future after its completion in 2018. Finally, 2015 saw an increase in the economic activity within the city. As mayor, I attended numerous grand openings and ribbon cuttings during the year. It was gratifying seeing that new jobs were being created as a result. We need to continue and build on our economic development activities in the coming year. 2015 was also a difficult year for the City Council and city staff as we dealt with the continuing impacts of the Cameron Springs mud and rock slides that occurred in late 2014, as well as attempted to continue to manage the drought affecting not only our city but all of California. In both cases, much time and effort, not to mention dollars, were spent attempting to find solutions to issues created by these events. While we certainly have not done... We are certainly not done with all these matters. At this time, I believe we made great progress in our effort to resolve them. We are definitely in a better position to deal with these issues as we move into 2016. My only regret during this term was our inability to gain approval from the regulatory agencies to begin construction of our planned desalination water plant. City staff did a lot of good work on this project during 2015. And while much progress was being made, we still haven't reached our goal in this very important effort. I know we will continue to work hard in 2016. But I'm hopeful that we will be successful in the coming year. We all understand how vitally important this project is to our community. In conclusion, I want to thank the members of this council for electing me mayor. Also want to thank our city manager and staff for the assistance they provided to me in helping me carry out the duties of the office. The mayor's job is filled by one person at a time. But it takes a lot of people behind that person to make the job get done well and continued. So again, thanks to all for allowing me to continue my service to this very special city that is our home. Thank you very much. You know, it's real easy to be a cheerleader for this city. It doesn't take much at all.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I just make a quick comment here? I want to thank Mary for sharing Bill with us this year. And I know how challenging it can be for your spouse and your loved ones and your family when you are not only a council member, but especially a mayor. And I just want you to know, Bill, and I'm very proud of you. I think you did a great job. This was a jam-packed year with jam-packed agendas and very significant, challenging issues that we all had to deal with, not only up here but in the community. But the mayor's the one that kind of leads the ship here. And I just think you did a very good job with that. I've known you and Mary for many, many years here. And I can remember years and years ago, you said that, you know, at some point, you know, if it ever allows or comes this way, that I'd kind of like to be on the city council here. And you were able to achieve that. And I think that that's been really good for the city. Hopefully, it's been good for you and Mary. You've learned a lot. You learn a lot about the community. But what I always say the most that you learn about is yourself. And you learn a lot about yourself in this job here. So congratulations, Mary. Again, thanks a lot for sharing them with your family. And I'm sure there's other challenges that you want to go. And there's probably places in the world that you and Mary want to travel to and things that you want to do. And I believe perhaps, just perhaps, you might have some... A little bit more time to do that. So again, congratulations, Bill.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments. I, you know, you... When you venture out of your normal career path that you had had all these, those years into something similar, but not the same, there's always some trepidation in it. But it's been done with the help of everyone. It's been relatively easy to accomplish that. I just sometimes wish there was more hours in the day. So with that, we'll move on to the next item that's on the agenda. And that's remarks by the incoming mayor. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, it's kind of strange. Because I've done... This is my sixth time to do this. And it all been under different circumstances. I've been, you know, it's always a great honor to be nominated and be mayor of the city like Camarillo. Camarillo is one of the best cities in the United States. I've been to many cities and seen how they're operated and so on. We have, bar none, we have the best staff that I've seen. And we have a council that can meet all challenges and do a good job at it. We have... During this past year, we've had many challenges. More than in any other year I've been on the city council. This has been the toughest year with challenges. And I think we all can agree to that.
I don't think so.
Except the one year. I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
You're right. You're right. The one year. That's right. But this is one of the toughest years we've had with challenges that we've done. And again, thanks staff for all you've done to help us meet those challenges. I hear Bill talking about the disalter. Yes. This is the year. And we've got to have it. We've got to get it done this year coming up. Because everyone asks about it when I make the PowerPoint presentations. And where are we? It keeps changing a little bit, but we're getting closer. And they love it. Tonight, I did one of those presentations. And they want to come back and get more people to see it because it was so good. That they know what we're doing now. And I tell them how the staff's been preparing everyone for this drought situation for years. And so again, thank you, staff. Also, I'd like to thank my wife and my daughter out in the audience tonight. They've had to put up with me. I call it my rocket fizz kids, both Ryan and my daughter, Angel. But they've had to put up with me and like Mary's had to put up with Bill, having to go to places and probably talking to him a lot about your opinion. But that's one of the things you go through. And again, this is my sixth time. And I really look forward to it because I think we're going to do some more solving of problems this coming year. I think it'll be a very successful year. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Whoever's... Whoever's running the meeting, whichever one of you.
Well, I guess I'll run until we adjourn, anyway.
Okay. I would just like to ask that we either hold the council meeting open or recess it until after the other meetings and then bring it back? Open it up again? If that's possible?
In other words, not adjourn the meeting, but just...
Don't adjourn it, just...
Just recess it?
Or hold it open and open the others? Either way?
We'll recess it till we reopen it. And with that, we'll move on. We'll move on to the next agenda. And that's the sanitary district. And Mr. Kildee?
All right. I'll call the sanitary district meeting to order and let the record reflect that all the directors are present. Any amendments to this agenda?
There are no amendments.
No amendments to this agenda? Any public comments for the sanitary? Okay. I don't see anybody making a mad dash up here. So we'll move on to item three.
That's good.
Which is the reorganization of the Camarillo Sanitary District Board. Jeffrey, do you want to take care of that, please?
Sure. So we'll follow the same process as before. We'll begin with the nomination for the office of chairman.
I'll nominate Charlotte Craven as chairman.
Are there any...
Second. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You don't have to have a second.
Are there any other nominations or motion to close nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. So we'll move on to the position of secretary. Are there any nominations?
Yeah, I move to nominate Bill Little as secretary of the sanitary district.
Are there any other nominations or motion to close?
Move nominations closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
That's it.
Okay. So there's no further business. We'll adjourn the Camp Sand district.
You're on, Mike.
Oh, I'm on? Wait.
The Community Development...
Says you're chairman.
Okay, library. You're right. You're right. You're right.
No. Community Development Commission.
I was going to the library. Going to Community Development? Okay. I haven't done it in a long time. Okay, I'd like to call the Community Development Commission together and let the record reflect that all are present. Amendments to the agenda? Are there any amendments?
No amendments.
Any public comments from people who want to talk about the Community Development Commission?
This is once and twice a year you get to have this meeting.
Yeah, twice a year. Now, we're into the reorganization of the Camarillo Community Development Commission, which meets twice a year. Do we have any nominations for the chairman?
Thank the city clerk.
Oh, go ahead, city clerk.
Any nominations for the office of chairman?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Kildee.
Second. Oh, you don't need a second, sorry.
Is there a motion to close?
Move nominations be closed.
A second?
I did.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any nominations for the office of vice chairman?
Nominate Jan McDonald.
Is there a motion to close nominations or further nominations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. So you can adjourn that meeting.
Do you need President Pro Tem?
Adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting, Mike.
We'll adjourn the meeting.
Call this meeting of the Camarillo Library Board to order and ask the record to reflect that all board... All trustees are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Public comments? Anyone like to speak to the Camarillo Library Board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to reorganization. And I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
All right. And this is our favorite position. Are there any nominations for the office of president?
I will nominate Kevin Kildee because I just noticed he's never been president of this.
Sure, I haven't.
Are there any other nominations or a motion to close nomination?
Move to be closed. Nominations be closed.
A second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any nominations for the office of President Pro Tem?
Nominate Bill Little.
I move to close the nominations.
Is there a second? Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. So we can adjourn the library board?
I will... I will close the library board meeting.
And we still have opened the city council meeting?
Yes, Your Honor. I asked that that meeting... I know this is a time of celebration for us. But there's two other cities not too far from us that are suffering a great deal today, San Bernardino and Redlands. And I think... and Redlands, and I think that it's only right to recognize that. Before I was born, I had an uncle who was killed in a massacre, and I know for a fact that the families of the 14 people who were killed today will never be the same, and probably the families of the 17 who are injured today will never be the same. And I would like for the mayor to ask for just a moment of silence for everything that happened there, to be with the, the city council as they deal with it of both cities, Redlands and San Bernardino, and for all of the law enforcement officers and all of the families of those who were injured and killed. So if you would, I'd appreciate that.
Mike? You're still in. All right, since I'm still in charge, I guess. I think that's a very good, it's something that we really need to think about. It, it seems like every, almost every week, there's some, some group of people or persons who take it upon themselves to try and change the world by killing as many people as they can before they get killed or get captured. I don't know when it's going to stop, but it sure goes on. So in memory of the people that are involved and the recognition of the issues that's created for the cities of San Bernardino and Redlands, let's please have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come?
Bill, just one more. We have a citizen that passed away this past week, Navy, World War II veteran, and very much involved in the community. His name is Joe Glad. And I'd like to close this meeting in the name of Joseph Glad.
Okay. I knew Joe, and he, he was a, he was a very fine person. He spent many years, he was one of the early docents at the Reagan Library.
He was, yeah, that's right.
And spent some 20, 25 years out there, basically running many, many of the docent functions.
This is the reason you're on that, he, not just that, but other ones, too. He was active in the community.
Yeah.
And being a veteran, I think, has time to honor someone like that.
That's right. And the other thing about Joe is he was from Wisconsin.
Oh, no. I didn't know that.
Was he a Packer fan?
You're going to take it back?
No, but he was apparently a very fine ice skater and a judge of ice skaters, so he had that. So your, your comments are well taken, and we will adjourn in his name and let the record, that record be submitted to his, his widow, Lois Glad. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll stand adjourned, and everyone's welcome to attend the light refreshments we're going to have back in the administrative conference.